Okay, we're all here. We've not got Richard yet, haven't we?
Right, I think we're all seated, ladies and gentlemen. As you see, I've been dropped in at the deep end. Our chairman had already booked a holiday before this meeting was brought forward. Right, there is no fire drill today or fire test alarm. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please leave the nearest fire exit and make your way to the car park in front of the council offices. And for members who are new, if you are wishing to join the queue to speak, you should press the large button on your microphone unit. Once this has been pressed, please do not press it again, or else you will upset the queue. So just the one press, please. Moving on to item number one, which we have, if I can get my paper handy. We have apologies for absence. Chief Executive.
Chairman, thank you. Apologies for absence have been received from councillor Mrs Bowkit, councillor Bridges, councillor Dodds, councillor Hague, councillor Kirk, councillor Spencer, councillor Mrs Talbot and councillor Whittington.
Yes, thank you very much indeed. Item two, declarations of councillors' interests. Councillors are reminded that there is no need to declare an interest if it has already been recorded on the Register of Disclosible Becunary Interests, DPIs, or notified to the monitoring officer in accordance with the relevant authority's Disclosible Becunary Interests. Regulations 2012. However councillors declare an interest must state what the DPI is and accordingly not speak or vote on the item. In the future, should you have any queries about declarations, please seek advice from officers in advance of the meeting. Thank you very much. Item three, minutes of the meeting of the County Council held on the 19th of May 2017, I should say, that the minutes of the meeting of the County Council held on the 19th of May 2017 be approved as a correct record and signed, in my case, by the chairman. Is everybody happy with those minutes? Please, can we have just a show of hands? All those accepting? Any against, which is not normally the case? And a few abstentions? Have we abstentions who weren't here? And that's me, I think. Thank you very much indeed. We move swiftly on to item number four, which is submissions of petitions. The council has received a petition requesting that Lincolnshire County Council reduce the speed limit on the A1084, Brig Road, to 40 miles an hour. And we have Mrs Viv Forbes to speak for no longer than five minutes and then present the petition to the chairman. Mrs Viv Forbes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to present a petition to reduce the speed limit on the A1084 in Grasby from 60 to 40. Sorry if I feel a bit wobbly, but I am quite nervous, actually. Grasby is a village of 400 inhabitants with a school of 95 pupils and is a well-used route from Market Raisin area to the Humber Bank. The 1084 is a trunk road from Brig to Caister and at the village crossroads, it crosses the road from the main village to Limber Airport and Humber Bank. The village street up to the stop sign is at least 10% gradient. The 1084, described by central government as one of the four most dangerous roads in Greater Lincolnshire, runs through part of the village and goes past a school entrance, a pub, crossroads and some 12 dwellings. When leaving the village, vehicles and bicycles must do a hill start to join or cross this road. The sightline to the left coming from Brig is only 100 metres, including a hidden dip. There appears to be no vehicles coming from the Brig direction, but the time one is halfway out and committed to the manoeuvre, a vehicle looms up behind you. Poor traction on the road makes this even more perilous. The sightline from Caister is less than 200 metres, and if approaching the crossroads from Limber and the airport, the sightlines are even shorter. At 60 miles an hour, which is the legal limit on this road at the moment, and many people go faster, the stopping distance for a car is 73 metres. At 40 miles an hour, it is 36 metres, a much safer margin. In wet conditions, the stopping distances are trebled and in ice, tenfold. The road is well-used by heavy goods vehicles and they take three times the distance of a car to stop in the dry. There are some very aggressive drivers who try to intimidate you if you pull out before you can see them. There are regular incidences of road rage and near misses, neither of which are reported and counted in statistics. We must have the only school in the UK with a 60 mile an hour speed limit going past an entrance. One school class must already use the field next to the road in their fire drill, and if there was an incident at the front of the school, the entire school would have to be evacuated onto a 60 mile an hour road. In September, the net intake will increase. The school also operates a nursery for younger children. The school has told me that they encourage children to walk or cycle to school and feel that they may be putting children in a dangerous situation with this advice. Children living in the homes on the 1084 have to cross this road to go to school every day. Bicycle groups use these crossroads to come through the village regularly. There have been numerous incidents of near misses with them. When petitioning, I heard so many horror stories, I don't have sufficient time to recount them all, but one lady told me that she had come from Brig, indicating to turn right, and a car behind her had to turn right with her to avoid colliding with her. One motorcyclist refused to sign the petition, and I quote, "It would spoil my exciting motorbike ride." The road is popular with bikers and it is mentioned on the Biker Groove website as being the main route to Cadwell. There are residents and their visitors who are too afraid to use these crossroads and they will make a three-mile detour to avoid it. We have horse boxes using these crossroads, having to perform a slow but perilous hill start to avoid injury to their animals. There are over 375 signatures on this petition, mostly from the village but also from regular visitors. In summary, we have a school with an entrance alongside the 1084, we have villagers living alongside the road, we have pedestrians, equestrians, cyclists and drivers using these crossroads, we have poor vision, speeding vehicles and a 10% gradient hill start. Everyone wants one thing, to be able to go to and from their homes and school without risk of injury or death. This isn't the first petition for a speed limit here, but it is the largest. Please don't dismiss the concerns of our villages, who will see from the petition are extremely worried. Please don't wait until there's a tragedy to make this change. And last night, that tragedy could have been me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to bring your petition forward? Thank you. Thank you very much. The Chief Executive has determined that the petition requesting, is my mic on, it is, that the Lincolnshire County Council reduce the speed limit on the A1084, Brig Road, to 40 miles an hour be referred to the Executive Councillor for Highways, Transport and IT. And as you heard in Mrs Forbes' last line, it could have been her last night, some of you know, she had a head-on collision on this very same road. She was in the right, apparently, on her right side of the road, but somebody came over a brow of hell on the wrong side. So we say, well done for coming again today and hopefully have not used any of your nine lives. Thank you very much indeed. On to item number five, Chairman's announcements. Do you want that, Tony? Yeah, thank you. Civic engagement since the last County Council meeting have been varied and have been given both the chairman and myself the opportunity to visit places within Lincolnshire. We were delighted to welcome His Royal Highness, the Duke of Gloucester, KGGCVO, to Lincoln, where he officially opened the new extension to Constant Stuart Hall at Bishop Crossitest University, visited the Order of St John's Care Trust at Booton Park House, officially opened the new bereavement centre at Lincoln County Hospital, and went on to open the Battles and Dinisters exhibition at the collection. I'm pleased to report that this year's Lincolnshire show was another huge success. Thank you to all members who took part in the Meet Your Members marquee, which saw a steady flow of visitors over the two days. It is with great sadness that I have to report the death of Mark Welsh, the county's flood, risk and development manager. Mark was a superb officer and I had the pleasure of working him on many occasions. Our thoughts are with Mark's family, friends and colleagues at this very difficult time. A complete itinerary of civic engagements since the last meeting of this council is available from the Civic Office upon request. We move on to item number six, and we have a statement by the leader of the council, councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, we do say a week is a long time in politics, but it is quite sobering to think that this time last year, David Cameron was comfortably ensconced in Number 10 Downing Street, George Osborne was busily running government on his behalf. Although there was a Brexit vote due, I think nearly everybody expected that to result in a remain. Just think what has happened since then, in merely a year, and we now have a new Prime Minister. David Cameron, George Osborne are not even members of Parliament anymore. The Brexit vote, as we all know, resulted in a leave vote, which has had considerable implications for the whole country. Theresa May, who, I think it's no secret to say, was very popular and even up to and including the County Council elections, could virtually do no wrong. And within a fortnight, it had all changed. Jeremy Corbyn, a year ago, was a figure of ridicule almost and really seemed to be delivering the Labour Party into the wilderness, and yet we have a situation where he has somehow turned that situation around. Politically, I don't agree with much what he says at all, but it's certainly quite an interesting political change of weather, if you like. So what does that mean for the County Council? I think we still have a duty to carry on despite all the changes which are going on. And of course, the other thing I haven't mentioned, 12 months ago, although we are fearful of terrorist incidents and outrages, we thought we would keep on top of that. And we also thought we are a highly regulated country where we are very safe and the authorities, inverted commas, made sure that we didn't live in unsafe buildings, for example. I mean, how things have changed in that time. County Council work goes on, of course, despite that, and I think, what are we all here elected for? We are here to actually, despite reduced funding and increased demand, continue to provide those vital and important services which the public out there elect us to deliver on their behalf. We're also there to find means of supplying the infrastructure, whether it be highways, schools or economic development, so that the life of the county can be actually dealt with properly. And I think we also have a duty to look forward in the future, to make sure that we set aside plans and arrangements with partners to make sure this county is looking well for the future. I suppose the one constant in that is, from a Conservative point of view, obviously, we had a really excellent election result just over a month ago, and it is quite sobering to think that there was lots of debate during the last council and why we were making those difficult decisions, which I don't think any of us really enjoyed doing, whether it be streetlights, whether it be libraries. And I think what's quite reassuring from a Conservative perspective, and indeed from those coalition colleagues, the electorate actually rewarded the coalition, almost exactly, to actually support us and actually, in terms of, in political terms, cast those opponents into the political darkness. So that was a clear, in my view, that was a clear result from the electorate, who were very clearly saying, "We understand what you're doing and we are supporting." So that was an endorsement, and I think does make the case that now as a Conservative-led administration, we can move forward with the confidence that we have the support of the electorate, even though, you know, a few weeks later, that a different story emerged from parliamentary terms. So I think that, for us personally, that was a huge endorsement. We obviously have a Conservative manifesto, which we will now deliver. We were pretty successful four years ago delivering a previous manifesto with the support from our independent colleagues. So there were five themes to that, and I think the first one was all about Brexit, and I think there is no political dispute about this, that although whatever our views on Brexit were in particular, I think it's important that we all make sure that the Brexit deal that is delivered, we at least make a clear view to those who are negotiating on our behalf, what is the best deal for Lincolnshire. And there are specific issues for us in terms of migrant labour, in terms of support to agriculture, in terms of flooding and in terms of economic support. So I think the council is now engaged with working out, so we can say with one clear voice, what we would like to see coming out of the Brexit negotiations in two years' time, and that will be in the interest of Lincolnshire. We can't guarantee, of course, that we'll get that, but I think we all have a duty to do that. We also have an issue with actually becoming more efficient. We called it cutting red tape and the fairer funding system. Of course, we're going to have the debate a bit later today. I think that's quite key, that we cannot go on eternally just being at the bottom of the pile, and we need to get to the stage of getting a fairer funding system. Obviously, we'll talk about that later on. We're also committed to keeping council taxes low, within the low quartile. We know that we are, although we are committed to putting it up by 2 plus 2% for the next two years at least, we will still remain in the lower quartile, and politically, that is something we want to continue to do. We also, you know, we are committed to looking at the governance, and I think that's something I'll turn to shortly. And we also, I think, in terms of devolution, quite key, that no matter what happens with unitary status, and I don't think much will happen actually in the near future, we actually do actually need to work better with town and parish councils, indeed anybody else. And I think we are doing some work with those organisations and others to actually say, well, actually, if they want to pick up some of the things that we no longer are able to do, and I think I mean grassroots cutting is a classic example of that, I think we need to work through how we can work in partnership with them. But also, I would argue that if somebody wants to take something up which we haven't thought of, my view is, well, we should say yes, unless there is a compelling reason not to do so. So I think there's some work to do, and in partnership with our district colleagues as well, where we work with town and parish councils and with district colleagues and with anybody else. We have quite an ambitious, despite the financial constraints we have, we have quite an ambitious programme. Obviously, we are delivering on the bypasses, Lincoln Eastern, of course, and Grantham Southern, as we speak, and other programmes across the county of improvement, spaulding and so on, and Skegness. But also, we feel that we need to think forward and actually make sure that we have plans in place, so that when government or other money comes forward, we have a programme which can put before them. And I suppose the centrepiece of that programme is very much what we're calling the Coastal Highway, which is the road from, in a sense, from Lincoln to Skegness, including completion of the Highcombe bypass in Lincoln. This isn't going to happen in the short term, but members who've been on the council for some time know that it takes a long, long time, 10 years minimum, from actually starting to do some work to actually the tarmac being laid. And certainly with Lincoln and Grantham, it's taken a lot longer than that. So there is a proposal later in this council to actually put money aside so that we can do those plans, because it's no good going to government or anybody else saying, "We want money for a bypass." They will say, "Well, show us, are you ready to go yet?" And if you say, "We haven't got the plans," they'll tell you to go away and get the plans. So there is an investment there to make sure that we actually proceed with those, and in some years to come, I think, certainly I won't be here anymore, and probably most of us won't be here anymore, we will hopefully have an improved road all the way from Lincoln to Skegness and an improved road round Highcombe as well, which I think will be a great asset to this county. We were also obviously very committed, despite the financial constraints, to actually continue to invest in flood protection and indeed highways maintenance. And we've, in the past, always protected the highways maintenance budget, and all of us who've just been knocking on doors, well, probably the number one thing you always get is the public are very clear, and when we consult them, they say exactly the same thing, that, "What is your number one priority?" The answer normally comes back, "We want the roads in a reasonable state." Big challenge for Lincolnshire, as we know, five and a half thousand miles of road, a lot of which has not actually got proper foundations, and we are doing our best, and I pay tribute to councillor Davis, who, you know, is moving a programme forward where we can actually get at least on top of the job, although I'm not sure we'll ever get to the situation where everybody will be happy, it's probably impossible. I suppose the other, the next issue is all about the health and wellbeing of our people, and obviously we have a continuing, very important relationship with the National Health Service in all sorts of ways. And the government rightly, of all, and I think any, everybody really agrees, that the answer to some of these problems are better integration between health and social care, in other words, the County Council and NHS. I think I could not claim that, I think we are, I think our view is they are very much up for that process, and government has got various initiatives where it's trying to encourage that by organisation, but more importantly, by financial means. I have to say, it has been a challenge working with NHS colleagues, and I think the, not local colleagues, I think they are still very much centrally driven, which does make local partnerships very difficult. But we have, there are various initiatives, including the Sustainable Transformation Programme, which the NHS is proposing, which this council unanimously opposed on certain aspects of it. There are certain aspects in there which were very good, which we would support. So we have, I think we have a mission, if you like, to try and come to a situation where we can agree this STP, but frankly, it will require the NHS to actually come to modify their proposals quite radically in some issues. We have, in our manifesto, was a clear commitment, we want to bring back the Lincolnshire ambulance service, because East Midlands ambulance is not delivering well for the whole of East Midlands, actually, but in terms of Lincolnshire, it's not delivering very well at all. And indeed, we are, we think that it's, the situation we had, where we had a Lincolnshire ambulance service, which was great at Lincolnshire at the time, we feel that is a better situation. And I know we want to do that, and certainly in conjunction with the Police and Prime Commissioner, I think that's one issue where, when that contract comes up for renewal, which is procured by NHS, that we feel that there should be a different way of doing things. So it's no good reforming the NHS and consolidating on fewer sites if people can't get to and from hospital in good time. So I think that's a key issue as well. Also, you're supporting the University Medical School, some of the key issue for us, and I think that has got cross-party support. Again, we know we've got a shortage of bringing doctors and qualified medical staff into Lincolnshire, very important that we also make sure that we get that medical school, because that's a key way if we can actually improve that. Safeguarding and children and adults, again, we are very good at that, we are second best in the country. Councillor Bradwell has got us to a situation where we are highly regarded, and certainly children safeguarding, we are one of the second best or the one of the best in the country. And as we all know, she is currently helping Rotherham try to get themselves into a better state of affairs, which is a huge feather in her and our cap. And of course, we do want to work with communities again and devolve that as well. And in terms of housing, that's another issue, we know that the government is key. I think everybody understands that we do need more housing in the UK, and we have 100,000 houses planned currently in Lincolnshire. And we do need to do our best to make sure, A, we get those housing, but more importantly, it is the right housing for this county. And I think we need those houses, but we need to make sure they are the houses which are right for our county. And more, as equally important is, the council has to provide many of the infrastructure around it, we need to make sure the uplift in value, land value, is actually delivered, which actually makes sure that infrastructure is delivered, so we don't get the situation where we get the houses without the infrastructure, which is very important. So the various other issues there. So I look forward to working with a large majority here, but as in the past, as in eight years ago, when we're in a similar position, I don't think it's right that we should just actually throw our rate about, and we are very keen to work with opposition councillors, and we have made certain opposition councillors chairman of various important committees, so that although we have a very strong position, we have a clear mandate from the electorate, we know where we want to go, we want to work in partnership with others, because everybody has been elected here by their community, so they all should have a say in what we go forward. I'm sure we'll disagree over the coming years, and I'm sure that nationally, goodness knows, what's going to happen this time next year, who knows what will the situation be? We will continue to do our best to support our residents and work together. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hill, for that very comprehensive statement. I have one, two speakers, sorry, one speaker, councillor Marianne Overton.
Chairman, I did see that there was a statement, so I wasn't exactly sure how much opportunity you would have, but I did just want to pick up a couple of points. Firstly, the election, whether it was an endorsement of this previous administration or whether it was an endorsement of Theresa May. And I think it is quite hard to tell when Theresa May does appear on the various ballot papers. So with half of the, around half the people voting, that's around 32% people voted, but half of those voted Conservative, that's 15%, taking 84% of the seats. If we had a different system, we'd have a different result. Thank you.
Just sour grapes, they lost the election, it's not our fault, and we actually, people, if people were unhappy with the way the council was being, the services were delivered, unhappy with what we're doing, opposition tried, they brought out the libraries, they brought out the streetlights, they brought out all sorts of things, people would have voted against it. Sorry, you lost, your party did badly, Marianne. Just accept it and move on.
Thank you for that. Now, I have been informed that the leader's statement is not to be sort of responded to, but I have another speaker, councillor Parker, and under the circumstances, I will allow this one speaker to respond. Councillor Parker.
Yep, couldn't miss the opportunity. It was, it was a good wide review about last year, how circumstances have changed since then, and a reasonably wise decision not to speculate about the next year. If we just look at now, I think one of the things that we will reflect upon is the importance of timing in elections, because I'm sure that you wouldn't have wanted to have a County Council election co-terminus with the general election in June, because I don't think the outcome would have been quite the same. In fact, when you talked about Jeremy Corbyn's unpopularity in the past, the latest YouGov poll actually shows the current Prime Minister, Theresa May, at the same level of unpopularity now as Jeremy Corbyn was in November. I think it's also slightly remiss of you not to mention the results in Lincoln and to congratulate Karen Lee for being elected MP for Lincoln, and I'm sure that as part of the normal way that you do business, you'll be talking to Karen in the same way as you do to the rest of the MPs. But it is a question of timing, because it is a large Conservative majority, and it can be seen as a mandate for the last four years, but it could also be put down to the exact timing of that election, because I think that it may well have produced a different result if it had taken place in June. The final point I wanted to make is quite simply to be welcoming the point you made at the end, which is a recognition that although the opposition members, in total only Number 12, that there is some quality even if there isn't quantity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker, and there's a lesson for us...
I'd just say that I congratulate all MPs who were elected in Lincolnshire, including our new MP for Lincoln. I have already invited her to have a meeting and she has accepted, so again, it is good that we work with all our elected people, so. And I think, I would disagree, I think the outcome would have been the same. Perhaps there wouldn't have been quite as many over here had the election been a bit later, but who knows? Next time, I think we'll run the national election, we might get on a bit better.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Right, before we get into deeper water, we'll move swiftly on to item number seven on the agenda, questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors, chairman of committees and subcommittees. Thank you. And I am anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated, I intend to allow forty-five minutes for questions, I am expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. Would councillors wishing to ask questions please indicate by pressing their button to join the queue and I may remind councillors that once their button is pressed and you have joined the queue you do not need to press your button again when I invite you to speak or when you sit down. Thank you very much. Now we've got a list here and I will ask the first councillor, is that the first one? Oh right, and the first one we have councillor Robin Renshaw for Richard Davies.
Thank you very much chairman. Many residents protested recently about urban street lighting, part night lighting switch-offs across the county and in Boston their MP supported the residents. He was assured that further considerations would examine exceptions to problems in specific locations. Can you inform the council of the timescale for this bearing in mind we spent many millions less last year than we took from Lincolnshire taxpayers and so are well placed if necessary to reinstate all the part night lighting to make our streets safer for all residents? Thank you.
Well, may I say how delighted I am that councillor Renshaw has found the money tree? If only we were in a position to reinstate lighting looking forward into the next ten years, the world would be a different place. The programme is completed, all but a few Victoriana lights have now been converted to a combination of part night lighting and also to high efficiency LED lighting, there is no plans to change the policy however we will after a twelve month period and I think scrutiny is also looking this independently, be reviewing the impact as we do with most decisions we make and looking at how the system has changed and how the people of Lincolnshire have reacted to it, in particular around if we've missed any particular locations, I've done some site visits including with yourself looking at specific locations and will continue to do so. However, I would point out the overarching reality is that crime in Lincolnshire in no small part done due to the excellent work done by Lincolnshire Police continues to form to almost historic lows and the local picture in terms of the impact of street lighting matches the national picture in terms of there is no correlation between street lighting and crime. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davies. Our second question comes from councillor Matthew Fido to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you. With the large disparity in local government funding between metropolitan areas such as London and the morality of Lincolnshire where people in London get around twenty percent more spent on them per head than their Lincolnshire counterparts equating to nearly two thousand pounds, would the leader agree that as a council we need to lobby our MPs and other authorities for a better funding deal for a more beneficial reassignment of funding towards Lincolnshire in order to continue to provide high quality public services to our residents?
Yes, thank you for that question, obviously that is, and the answer, the obvious answer to that is yes and obviously later in this meeting we will be having a paper to actually just kickstart if you like that, that very campaign. I think this has been a longstanding issue for many, many years, I don't want to do the debate twice but it, in terms of we do need to work with other partners and already I have, we have informed MPs, district council leaders and other, other partners throughout Lincolnshire that we are going to make this campaign and I think people sometimes misunderstand it's not particularly about wanting ten, twenty million next year, what we need to get to is a fairer funding system so that we get somewhere near the average and as councillor Fido well knows, I mean if we just got the average of county councils it would be an extra forty-five million pounds a year better off. So it's all about getting that average up so that we don't all continually have to have top-ups from government or wherever because we've got a campaign, we've got, we've got a problem. So it's talking with all those partners and together, hopefully we'll all go together, make the case to government and as it's, and that's what we all have I believe a duty to do because we can't carry on as we are being shortly to be the lowest funded county council in the whole country in governmental support.
Thank you councillor Hill for your reply. Our next question is from councillor Paul Key to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good morning councillor Dave. Unsurprisingly my question is about street lighting as well. So can you councillor Davies confirm that a full risk analysis and user consultation required by BS 5489-1 colon 2013 has been carried out? And for clarification, Mr Chair, that's the British Standards Institution and its standard publication, the word I've just said, code of practice for the design of road lighting. Thank you.
Yes, to the best of my knowledge our street lighting design all confirmed with both British standards, European standards and local authority guidelines set out by, I think it's STRATA.
Thank you councillor Davies and just for the records I am referred to as chairman and not a piece of furniture. Thank you very much. Our next question is from councillor Kev Clark to councillor Nick Worth.
Thank you chairman, didn't take long to jump in the hot seat did it? Right, councillor Worth, following the disaster in London last month, any calls now to the London Fire Brigade that relate to tall buildings will be responded to by the aerial platform being dispatched automatically. Can you state what is the position now with Lincolnshire fire and rescue concerning such buildings, i.e. will the London fire rescue be adapted by Lincolnshire County Council? And also could you tell me what the average time would be, the response time for that platform to get to anywhere it needs to be in Lincolnshire? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor Clark, very nice to move back in that hot seat listening, responding to your inquiries and of the, after this tragedy in London, can confirm we obviously have two area lifting platforms in Lincolnshire, one based in Boston, one based in Lincoln, both of those can reach high story blocks in those areas in a very short time, I couldn't give you the exact time but Lincoln it is obviously the most important area because that's where the majority of high story blocks are and probably you would be there within five minutes without too much of a problem I would have thought. What I would say, there's obviously been a review of all our operational plans, risk, risk information as a result of that but we do carry out regular inspections and continue to carry out regular inspections of our high-rise blocks and indeed when they're being built we also carry out training in those buildings so that the firefighters in that area are familiar with those buildings. So as far as Lincolnshire fire and rescue are concerned I have full confidence that in conjunction with the City and Lincoln Council where they speak to residents on a regular basis and in fact are going to residents of the three main high-rise blocks over the next few weeks to discuss any issues they might have, that we can respond to any emergency that is required but thank you for the question.
Thank you councillor Worth. Our next question is from councillor Bob Adams to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Having regard to the current political climate, does the leader of the council consider it appropriate to go forward with the process of consultation with the electorate in respect of a unitary authority?
Thank you for the question, obviously as part of the uncertain times, the government, the new government has been formed and we had the Queen's speech and bills announced for the next two years, there was nothing about local government in either, in that bill so there'll be no new legislation put through Parliament which affects, which needs, which will affect local government. So that means effectively that even if there was an upswell of support for unitary governance which I know many of us feel is probably the future for Lincolnshire, there is no mechanism by which the government could actually get the legislation through at least for the next two years and if it then did it two years, day one, we would, as we know, would be, we'd be looking several years beyond that. So the council, previous council did actually agree to do a period of consultation so I think at the moment, I think that it is not sensible really to proceed with a consultation on something which we know cannot happen for at least two years. I think we, we will have to do it sometime but I don't think at the moment that, that really makes much sense at all. In the meantime, you know, we are once again going to work with district colleagues and others and we are, we are still meeting as a Greater Lincolnshire Partnership and I am, my view is that although the unitary and devolution debate is certainly off the table for the moment, I think that is an added incentive to all of us to not just have nice conversations around the table about how things could be better, we actually want some outcomes in terms of waste management, in terms of disabilities facilities grants, in terms of all planning and terms of housing. So I think there is an opportunity now, we have three new district leaders as well, I think there is an opportunity where we can reset and actually work out how together we can actually show that we can improve the lot of Lincolnshire and work better together. So I think that is my priority for the, for the short term at least.
Thank you councillor Hill. Our next question is from councillor Robert Parker, again to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you. Councillor Davies referred to a money tree and you referred actually to the importance of fairer funding. Given that councillor Davies said there's no money tree and given the paper that we're going to look at, A about the amount of money coming into local government and B about the distribution of it, how would you square both of those arguments with the bung that the government gave to the DUP of a billion pounds which seemed to cut across any ideas about a fairer funding when it comes to allocation of scarce resources?
What I would answer to that is of course the, as with the, it was, most of the money, nearly all the money I understand it which was going to Northern Ireland will actually go to capital projects for build, for roads, broadband and all the rest of it and actually that money does equate to the devolution programme because as we know, the likes of Manchester and the likes of other areas which now have, and Birmingham, they have actually been offered very similar or big deals and I'm not, can't remember the exact figure which the, the newly elected mayor of Birmingham and the Midland, the Central Combined Authority, they have been offered large sums of money, next door in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, large sums of money again have been offered again in terms of mostly capital and some revenue. So actually you could argue that Northern Ireland is merely catching up with the rest of the country so, and of course what I would also say to councillor Parker is this fairer funding review is about revenue day-to-day spending and that's the issue and with, it's always been easier to get capital money out of government if you get your act together and are prepared to match fund. What we need to do is that the day-to-day revenue funding, get it into a more equal status so that we can actually not have to put the council tax up so much maybe, at the same time be on an equal power with other parts of the country including Northern Ireland.
Thank you councillor Hill. Our next question comes from councillor Matthew Bowles and again to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you chairman. Councillor Davies, during the run-up to the local elections in May, you paid a visit to Gainsborough to meet with two local Conservative councillors to discuss amongst other things the street lighting in Gainsborough. It was widely publicised and reported in the local media and even in election campaign material that as a result of your meeting, the issue will be reviewed during the summer, even quoting you as saying Gainsborough is a key urban area in the county and whenever we make changes to services it is important that we listen to the public. With this in mind, can you please confirm the details and scope of the review? When will it take place? How will the review be conducted? The period it will be completed? What streets will be involved? And most importantly, how will residents be consulted and will they truly be listened to? Thank you.
Thank you and I'd like to reiterate the points I made in my quote and I'm, thank you for councillor Bowles for reminding me of those, Gainsborough is an absolutely key area of the, of the authority that we look after and in terms of how we're going to be looking back at the, the impact of the street lighting view is very much around issues around safety and crime. In terms of timescales, I think possibly we're going to be looking to do it in the autumn when we've got a bit more data so we can see what the changes and the impact has been and it's very much about ensuring that the policy that we've got has been implemented fairly. I've been to some couple of locations and I think there's one in Gainsborough but for example in Spalding where our policy is very clear around care centres for the elderly and there have been occasions where these have been missed out because of miscommunication and it's important in those kind of locations that we review them and make sure the lights are on. And in terms of how the public communicate, I have to say through the likes of yourself with respect, so in terms of talking to the local councillors, seeing that we've got all the right data and making sure that we are implementing that policy fairly across the whole county and I think you'll probably in your patch and for all councillors will have locations and I know Angela does in particular in her location where there have been inconsistencies in terms of how the policy's been applied and it's important that we rectify those. That doesn't mean we're looking at a whole scale turning on of the light but it's about making sure it's fair and equitable. I think also scrutiny are going to be reviewing next April potentially when we've got a year's worth of data so that we'll be able to look at things like the impact on crime, community safety etcetera because of course you want to be looking at both the data during the summer and the winter months to ensure that we don't miss anything else.
Thank you councillor Davies and our next question actually comes from you councillor Davies and it is to councillor Mrs Trish Bradwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I thought I'd make a rare change. I'm really pleased with what Lincolnshire County Council's doing in my patch in terms of building the Poplar Farm School, however with any kind of investment of this kind it does generate concerns about how parents will be able to get their children into the school and I know we have a really good track record in Lincolnshire of building schools and supplying them but I would really benefit if councillor Bradwell could give me some idea of how the selection process will work and how the, the acceptance process for parents getting their children into the school will work.
Thank you councillor Davies for that question. Yeah, we're really pleased that we're able to build a new school on Poplar Farm, it's going to be a huge housing estate, I think eighteen hundred houses for a start with a possible, you know, there's a twelve hundred. So, you know, we, we could no longer place children in the schools, existing schools in Grantham. So yes, we've, over the years we've built a number of new schools and the process that we open them now is with just opening the reception class because what we found in the past is that, it's a number of years ago now, probably ten years, we built a school at Witham St Hughes and the whole of the year group's reception to year six was opened and then we found that local parents who live nearest a school could not get their children in the next year. So what we do now as I say is open just reception class and then that helps sustain the schools in the area as well because if parents start moving their children out of a school just down the road because they want their child to go to a brand new school, again that can destabilise the education in the area. So we do feel it's very important that local children who are nearest a school get to a local school and again I know some parents will be upset that they can't access a place at this new school but I think we have to be fair to those parents who are going to be moving on to that housing development in the next couple of years and actually, you know, you go look round, you look at your house, you're told there's going to be a school there and you can walk your child to school and then you can't get them in and that's a real problem to us. So I hope that Richard can obviously give confidence to parents if they're asking him what's going to happen in that area that, you know, local children on the estate will get a place at that school. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs Bradwell. Our next question is from councillor Jackie Brockway and again to the very popular councillor Richard Davies.
Okay, thank you chairman, my question was about the link between street lighting and crime and it's already been answered. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs Brockway. Our next question councillor Alison Austin, again to Richard, councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you chairman, I do owe a slight apology to councillor Davies, not for asking a question about Boston of course but for the fact that the question that I sent him has undergone some considerable change overnight and I wasn't able to get it to you so you are going to have to listen and then think on your feet. I apologise. Right. Okay, now for it. The A sixteen and the A fifty-two are both, are two major strategic roads which both transport the produce grown in Lincolnshire for distribution ultimately to feed the rest of the nation. produce grown in Lincolnshire for distribution, ultimately to feed the rest of the nation. These roads converge, as you know, in Boston, and frequently cause major congestion, even complete gridlock. Should government money become available, it will require LCC to have schemes shovel-ready. Please will councillor Davis offer some hope to users of these roads, and work with highways to have perhaps what we might describe as a quick win scheme, ready for action, that could relieve the situation until local development can bring forward a distributor road. Thank you, and I apologise for the change.
Thank you for the question. You're absolutely right. I mean, the government's announcement is potentially really exciting news. However, as always, the devil is in the detail, and we are seeing some rollback already from our very good friends in the Treasury about how and where the money will be spent. I think Boston is certainly one of our key target areas. I have to say, I'm nervous about phrases around "quick wins", I have to say, because really the solution for Boston is a distributor road. We're committed to it as part of the transport strategy, which has looked at where the traffic is and coming from, and as you know, and we've discussed on-site and many times, that the solution is not a bypass for Boston, it's a distributor road, and there are subtle differences to that. However, in particular, looking at the bridge issue is going to be a really expensive point of which to cross, and it will, between those two, the quadrant two linkage and the quadrant three linkage to the other side of the drain, that I think is potentially the kind of bottleneck that government money can help with. I'm really pleased, and I know we'll be coming on to discuss it later, in terms of the budget proposals, we're making more money, or potentially making more money available for exactly this kind of shovel-ready scheme, and of course, working on the, building on the work of the Route Action Plan, Boston and those particular roads are going to be at the forefront of everybody's minds with getting schemes to a position where they're deliverable.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Our next question comes from councillor Angela Newton, and it is for councillor Nick Worth.
Thank you, chairman. It's actually for councillor Bradwell, my fault, I apologise, I got the wrong portfolio holder. This group will be supporting councillor Hill in his efforts to try to get a fair settlement for Lincolnshire at last. I know to date, schools in Lincolnshire have not suffered cuts experienced by other services. However, most services are now cut to the bone, and I would like councillor Hill and councillor Bradwell to assure us, they will use their best endeavours not to cut the budget to Lincolnshire music services. I accepted an invitation to attend a concert at South Holland Centre last Sunday afternoon, where David Dory conducted Lincolnshire Youth Wind Orchestra, and what a treat the audience had. Over 50 young musicians playing a range of works, from music including Star Wars, the Danbusters, selection from Les Mis, and musics of Glenn Miller, and of course, the Henry Wood sea shanties. It was absolutely fantastic. You could not have heard better music anywhere. I understand the conductor, David Dory, is retiring after being with Lincolnshire County Council since about 1973, and I would ask that councillor Worth, on behalf, sorry, councillor Bradwell, on behalf of the county council, write to Mr Dory on behalf of the county, thanking him for his excellent service that he's given to music and the youngsters in this county. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Newton, for that. Actually, I think all members would agree that we have a fantastic music service in this county, and they are going from strength to strength. Actually, when we did look at reducing budget within children's services, our music service had been actually going and selling some of their services at that time just to Peterborough. They are self-sufficient in that they go out, and they're now selling more of their services, but also they are the lead for the music hub that the government launched a few years ago, and they actually draw down £600,000 from the Arts Council every year, and that funding has been agreed for another three years. What the government really did when they set up music hubs was divert the money from DFE to a local authority, they diverted it to these music hubs. I have to say that recently, in the south of the county, they've been working with year seven children, and they've had 5,000 young people getting them to play a musical instrument for the last few months down in the south of the county. So again, I think that's, it isn't just about, like, you heard some very professional young people playing the strings orchestra, they're actually trying to encourage young people to actually, you know, play an instrument, and these will be people who've probably never picked up a guitar or a trumpet before. So I do think they do a fantastic job, and actually, only the other night I was with the music service, and we had a jazz ensemble there who've won a national award recently. So I think we have to be very proud, and we will, you know, as much as we can continue. I think because they are sustainable in their own right, and they're doing lots of other things, plus going around the county and showing people in South Holland, and they'll be going to Skegness and all over, what they do, I think, you know, we have got something that we need to be proud of. Thank you.
Written to...
Yes, sorry. You know, so yes, we will.
Thank you, councillors. Our next question is from councillor Graham Cullen, to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chair. Ma'am, sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Travelling from Mabelfort to Lincoln, when it rains, I see lots of gullies not cleared. The road with lots of water. When the bus pulls up, people at the bus stops, often step back when the gullies are not cleared. Thank you.
It's a key area of work for the council, and what we do now is, rather than cleansing all gullies automatically, we have a targeted approach. So we measure the amount of material, we take out of the gully, and use that historic data to tell us whether or not we need to go back. However, that doesn't mean we always get each of them, so if you've got particular areas you're aware of, if you could report it through the CSC system, we'll make sure we get those attended for you and cleaned out. And thank you for using public transport.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Our next question is from councillor Lewis Strange, and again to the popular councillor Richard Davies.
Once more to the ever-popular councillor Davis. Richard, during last year's Lincolnshire Sugar Beak campaign, an unexpected development occurred in several parishes, often on narrow, c-classed roads. This involved large lorries being loaded via an elevator placed over the hedge, rather than in a field or in the farmyard. An example was at the village of Walesby near Market Raisin last year, where the lane became practically impassable due to a queue of lorries. Chairman, as you know, we are only two months away from the start of this year's campaign, and whilst as an ex-farmer and rural dweller, I will always support our tremendous farming tradition. I'm sure you would agree, it must not be at the inconvenience of other road users, or at added cost to the county council and its ratepayers. I am asking you, what we at the county council can do to contact these large farming organisations, and make it clear restricting the road and damages the edges is totally unacceptable to not only others wishing to use the highway, but to ourselves in having to repair collapsed road haunches. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Strange. It's a very good question. I mean, we're in constant dialogue on a number of issues with both the National Farmers' Union, but also the Country Landers' Zones Association, who, as you can imagine, don't always appreciate the direction we're coming from on such issues. I think, not on the roads specifically, we have an agreement with Lincolnshire Police that in terms of members of the public wishing to report it, please contact Lincolnshire Police, and they will deal with it from an enforcement perspective, likewise with moving traffic offences such as blocking the roads. I think there is scope here for us to do more, actually, and I think it's something we could look at kind of collectively across the county. And I certainly know, you know, from my own experience, the rise of farming contractors in particular, certainly the bee men, they are seeing bigger wagons, bigger vehicles, and a more industrialised process. So I think we need to be reaching out to them ahead of this year's season, so I'll make sure we crack on with that.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Our next question comes from councillor Mrs Julie Killie, for councillor Mrs Trish Bradwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Mrs Bradwell, could you update the council about the current situation about delayed transfers of care, please?
I can, I can. I haven't got figures in front of me, but Lincolnshire, well, in Lincolnshire, the social care part of delayed transfers, that's when obviously we arrange to have somebody back home and initially give them home care, or they go into residential home, has been the statistics across, with ours across the country, we've been very low, we're very good at doing that. Some of the issues that we've had in Lincolnshire, actually, although we would sometimes moan at the hospital, they haven't been, there haven't been a lot of problems of late. Obviously, when we get to wintertime, in the winter last year, they were quite high, which is the case across the country, because we know older people get ill. But in the main, we're doing our job. The issue is that if families don't want their parents to go to a residential home where we've got a space, they can say no, and the person stays in hospital. And what we really need to see, I think, with the STP is that actually, that people, once they've been in, say, Lincoln or Boston, and they've had their surgery, or they're getting better, you know, if we could move them out to one of the smaller hospitals like at Gainsborough, or Louth, or Grantham, and they could recover there, and then perhaps then they would go home straight away. But I think, you know, people do have choice, and that sometimes can skew the figures, because people are saying they don't want to go where there is a place. But I think in the main, we're doing very well. Obviously, the government have set us very, very hard targets this year, and part of the additional BCF money that the council got is specifically for delayed transfers. So I think this year, you know, we've got to get health colleagues working with us as well, so that we can actually get people moved on quickly, you know. So there's got to be probably more variety of places for people to go, as I've just mentioned. But no, it's on adult scrutiny, it's a thing that's scrutinised every quarter, so we know, we don't want to be fined or anything like that by government, and we don't actually want to be held up as a county that's not doing the job for our residents. So obviously, you're a new councillor, and quite happy to keep you briefed as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bradwell. Our next question is from councillor Dan McNally, and again to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. When the cuts to amenity cutting were first publicised last year, North Sommecoast Parish Council decided to get the maps, the areas, and the size that they needed to get the quotes for the cutting. They checked this with the contractor at the time, which was, which Dolce Fine. When recently, the contract for some of the payments come through to sign, it turns out that the area has gone from 6,000 metres to 15,000 square metres, and some extra areas actually included. I was wondering if you could, possible to look at this and find out what's gone wrong? Because on a bigger issue, is this happening to other places? And if we are transferring services over, we need to do it as soon as is possible.
Thank you for the question, and apologies actually to your parish council, councillor McNally, for the confusion. There have been occasions and locations where this type of problem has happened. I think one of the things we found as we've pulled back on the immunity grass cutting is there was a lot of grass being cut in locations that really, Mr Chairman, we weren't necessarily quite aware of, and there were some disputes about what was being cut, and by and large, I think people were just getting on and doing it. So as we've kind of withdrawn and retrenched a little bit, we have seen these kind of issues crop up. Very happy to kind of come up and look at your issue in more detail, though.
Thank you, councillor Davis. And our final question on the list today is councillor Richard Butroy, for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, chairman. With the recent tragedy at Grenfell Tower, what procedures and fire precautions have we put in place as a council? And do we have any areas of concern within our council portfolio? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Obviously, our thoughts and prayers go out to all those people at Grenfell Tower who lost their lives, and indeed, families of those, and indeed, those who have been displaced, and obviously going through a very traumatic experience. We've been very active since then. The government has actually asked us various questions in terms of six stories of residential properties and above. We have none of those. There are some in Lincolnshire, but they're obviously mostly in the city council area, and we are doing work with them. I think there's two, three main strands really. There's the Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue have been actively involved, so we've offered welfare support to the London Fire Brigade, we've given presence and community safety advice at the Lincoln, the three Lincoln tower blocks, we're working with district councils to provide support, guidance, and reassurance. There are drop-in sessions organised for the three Lincoln tower block residents, just to reassure them that they are indeed safe, but also just to remind them of what to do in case something happens. And we are also inspecting high-rise buildings, which we have always done in the fire service, particularly in Lincoln, and I know over some years now, there've been drills and practices to actually keep sure that everybody knows, if unfortunate fire does occur, that we can do that, and there's a risk-based programme, and we are fully aware. In terms of our property services, although we have no properties at all, which are in the zone of wanting, the government wanting to report back, we have taken the decision to inspect all our properties, which will include school properties where appropriate, to see if we have any of this cladding. And at the moment, there is a very limited amount of cladding that we are aware is out there. There are some schools where there is an issue, and obviously, the legislation is now that it is up to the school involved to, they have now the responsibility to make sure these things are right, but we are visiting all the schools, including and advising academy schools, that we, you know, if they want us there to advise and give them support, we will do so. So that's where we are. So quite a busy time of it, so we are looking at across the piece to make sure that we are going on above and beyond what we need to do to find out where this cladding is, and if there is any on buildings, we will quickly make sure. No residential, but there are some office, and obviously, any other buildings by other organisations will be identified and advice will be given. I suppose the final strand, which is quite, obviously where a lot of the publicity comes, was in terms of the emergency planning response and all the rest of it. And I do think, we do have a very good record in Lincolnshire about working together, and we've had various mostly flooding incidents over the years, where we have the Emergency Planning Centre down at South Park, and we do work very well with partners and organisations, and indeed, the media, who we embed within the emergency planning. So when we have a goal command, everybody's together, and it, to be fair, we are seen as one of the leading, one of the best areas to do that. For example, we had flooding several years ago, we handled it quite well, they had flooding in Somerset at the same time, we had Boston, actually, our response was seen to be a lot better. But I don't think we can, any of us, be complacent, because what has certainly come out of the Grenfell fire in particular, and indeed, some of these terrorist outrages, that I think initially, obviously, people expect somebody in uniform to reassure when something horrible happens, but very quickly then, they expect the council to step up to the plate and hold the ring, if you like, and reassure, and do all those things which should be done. It's quite clear that Kensington and Chelsea Borough Council, I think, did not step up to that plate, but there are examples, which we heard of at the local LGA conference last week, that actually, there are other areas like Manchester, Southwark, Islington councils, which have had terrorist outrages, and I think we all just need to make sure that it's not only making sure we do the right thing and have all those things in place. I think the public, and it's reassuring for local government that the public turn to councils in times of distress, if you like, and we have a duty to make sure that not only we've got everything in place to do the right thing, we are there and seem to be there, making sure that things were done properly. And I think one of the issues with, certainly with Grenfell, is the council, unfortunately, there was a press statement, and then they disappeared, and frankly, these days, especially with social media, we need to be seen to be on top of the case, reassuring the public who are there, reassuring the media who are there, reassuring all the people on social media. And it is quite a balance, because you don't want to get into the situation where you're, that need, very strong need, is actually interfering with the very proper response of the emergency services. So I think we will do a review of how we are doing things, and social media certainly has taken a higher profile, shall we say, and frankly, if you don't get the right, actually, the whole reputation of not only the council, but the area will take a hit, and we're determined that we have a very good record in Lincolnshire, so if something horrible happened... has taken a higher profile, shall we say, and frankly, if we don't get the right, actually, the whole reputation of not only the council but the area will take a hit. And we're determined that we have a very good record in Lincolnshire, so if something horrible happened in our county, we would be in a good place to respond properly with partners, but at the same time, give an adequate response to all those inevitable questions which people and the media have.
Thank you, councillor Hill, for that. Right, that was the final question. Unless there are any burning questions for any other member, I shall move on to item eight, which is lobbying for a fairer funding deal for Lincolnshire. Again, I call on councillor Martin Hill to move this. Councillor Hill.
Well, thank you, chairman. Obviously, we have partly already discussed this very important matter already, and obviously, this is why this paper is coming to the council. And I've said before, this is not a new phenomenon. I think ever since I've been on the council, we've always argued, at Lincolnshire and other rural councils have always argued, whether the funding is fair between the rural, delivering rural services, for example, and delivering services in metropolitan areas. And nationally, there's always been this battle royal between the metropolitan areas and rural areas as to how the funding is delivered. I think also that we, so we have got to a stage where, where we are at the moment, Lincolnshire County Council will next year, I believe, be the lowest funded county council in the country in terms of government support and grant. That can't be right. And how can it be right that we, if we got the average of county councils alone, we would get an extra £45 million? If we got the average that include, that we got the same as in the London boroughs, for example, we get £150 million a year extra. And when you consider, you know, that we're at the moment having to find £30 million approximately every year, to save £30 million a year, that would mean we could forget about streetlights, we could forget about all these other things we've had to do, and actually could talk about increasing services. And it cannot be right that in the London boroughs, they have half the council tax that outside, a lot of councils have outside London, at the same time, they have all that, because they have that extra grant. A lot of this is historic, and it's just built up over the years in terms of funding which has happened previously. And I think there is now an acceptance that this can't go on, not just in Lincolnshire and other rural areas. I think there's a general accepting, the funding formula which is used by government is probably not fit for purpose anymore. It never has been for some years, and it's just been bolted on to year after year, and various things are put together. So the good news is, the government, although there's nothing in the Queen's Speech in Parliament and formally in terms of local government, there is a commitment as part of the Queen's Speech that they will proceed with a fairer funding, looking at fairer funding across the piece. So that is very good news, because I think, as I said earlier, it's not, this isn't a question of give us £30 million this year and we'll see how we get on the year after. We need to get to a position we all agree what is fair. And frankly, we all provide the similar services across this country, we all pay approximately the same amount to our staff, because we're all mostly on national terms and conditions, and even those councils which aren't tend to mimic the national terms and conditions. Yes, there are exceptions in London where there are particular circumstances, but I think it's very clear, we need to get to a situation we should quite easily, it's not very complicated, all agree what looks like fair. And most of the funding is based on population, of course, but let's agree what looks like fair and what is the sort of, the average cost of delivering services. That actually is not a difficult job. Then you can start discussing about, you know, adding, you know, talking about extra pressures and all the rest of it. And then when you've agreed what is fair, you need a process whereby, let's get everybody to what is fair. And obviously, that means Lincolnshire will get over years more funding, and some of the richer areas will get less funding. It is more difficult when you're in a budget reduction regime, but frankly, we need to get on with it. And in the past, I mean, as a Conservative, one of my frustrations is the Labour Party, when they're in government, they actually do make sure that extra funding has gone to the metropolitan areas. It's very frustrating, the Conservative government never seems to be able to actually row back from that and actually redress the balance. Because, of course, when people are going to lose money, it always goes down very well. So I think this campaign is very, very important for the future wellbeing of the residents of Lincolnshire. And the campaign is not about county councils specifically, we are talking about all councils in Lincolnshire, because that's the only way we compare ourselves to London boroughs or other areas, which, some of which have fire services. Obviously, in London, they're unitary and all the rest of it. So the figures that we are going to run with, and there'll be, County News will be running a campaign next week when it's published, they will be on a like-for-like basis. And nobody can seriously argue that it's not fair. There are arguments from people, obviously, those who are getting lots of money, how it's all too difficult, oh, it's totally, we can't do it, and it's going to take years, and other spurious arguments are put forward. They're just trying to defend their position. So I think we all need to work together, district and county council, but also partners, MPs, all the other services, because it's not just the councils that are suffering under this system, it's the health service, it's the police service, every service you can think of is suffering from this, this funding problem. And we really cannot go on as we are, and we're not asking for it to be the best in the country, best funded in the country, not even asking to be the average funded in the country by next year. What we need to set is a direction of travel where we get eventually to a situation where every year we are topped up a bit. And to be fair to the previous Labour government, we did win the argument about sparsity and deprivation, which is always the key sort of clash, if you like. We all know that there's just as much deprivation in rural areas as there in urban areas, but a lot of it in rural areas is hidden, and it's not in one place, and there are a lot of people who are just happy to soldier on in deprivation, and they don't ask for anything. So I think we won that argument, and the formula was changing in our direction, but unfortunately, the government, we had a new government and the austerity regime kicked in, and they froze that formula. So we've now been doing that for seven years now, so I think the time has now come that we need a commitment, and the government has given that commitment. And frankly, the LGA needs to step up to the plate, they need to get on with it and come forward with a funding regime which they can suggest a government, which government hopefully would then accept. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hill. A second for that.
That. I'd just like to say that, obviously, I endorse everything that councillor Hill said, and I'm not going to go through the things he said, but I would just like to say, we have for perhaps the last year been lobbying government over the fairer funding for schools. That started, you know, that's already there. The government had backtrack, they said that they would sort that out and then decided not to, and obviously, it hasn't come back really on to the agenda since the election. But actually, I've always lived in a very rural area, I've never had the pleasure of living in a town or even Lincoln. But, you know, people do assume that rural areas don't have their challenges with travel. I mean, if we look at our social workers, they're travelling miles a day to go see families, even our home care workers, with the money that we pay to our home care providers. We insist that part of that is, when people are in the rural areas, there's extra money for home care workers working up at the top of the county market, raising area, because we know it costs more to deliver those services. And I really do feel that, actually, with all the savings that we've made over the last couple of years, we are now coming to the stage where we cannot continually to cut the budgets. We have been able to prioritise those, you know, important services and essential services that people do need across this county. But I think now is the right time to actually push with our colleagues across the county, to actually say enough is enough, and we've really got to, you know, have, even if it's only the average of what other councils get, we do deserve that, and we need to fight for that for our residents. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bradwell. I have three speakers on my list at the moment, and I shall take councillor Chris Brewis first. Councillor Brewis.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and it would be wonderful if, when we vote on this, it was unanimous, and we could say it was unanimous, because we all agree with it. And I think Martin's had the decency to admit that it's not just one government, all governments have punished rural Britain in the belief that they cope, and like idiots we do, don't we? But I think when we put it into figures, it means that the metes like Birmingham, Liverpool, Newcastle, Leeds and so on, probably get something approaching £200 per head extra from government for every man, woman and child. And some of the London boroughs, including the incompetent Kensington and Chelsea, get more like three or up to £400, and that ain't fair. They even admitted they owed us, not so long ago, government admitted they owed us £22 million a year, and then, oh dear, it might have to come away from Berkshire, Surrey and Oxfordshire, where all the government and shadow ministers live. Oh, dear, 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 dear. Well, Lincolnshire will cope, and like idiots we try to. It just seems to me that if we were unanimous, it would have, it might have a slightly more effect. It is time the formula was looked at seriously. We, Suffolk and Leicestershire, and we can argue, we think we're probably the poorest funded, it may just to say be Leicestershire or Suffolk, but we are one of the most poorly funded per capita ones. And an awful lot of the people that have most demand on our services have moved from some of the wealthy areas to housing in Lincolnshire to retire, and that isn't adequately taken into account, in my opinion. But when we talk about what's recently happened, where a bung has been thrown to Northern Ireland, there are two alternatives. One is, our seven MPs unanimously in Lincolnshire could withdraw support from the government, unless they chuck us a couple of billion pound, which would be an interesting idea. But I've got an even better idea, because we're so good at coping, why don't we say to government, you employ Lincolnshire to teach all the metes and the London boroughs how to manage and pay us £2 billion for the privilege?
Thank you, councillor Brewis. Our next speaker is councillor Robert Parker. How about you, councillor Parker?
Yeah, Chris makes the point about unanimity, and certainly the Labour Group are supporting this paper, as we have done in the past. I think, though, that it's not quite as simple as Martin suggests, only because he didn't emphasise the two distinct parts of the argument that are contained in paragraph three. And that's very simply, is the pot big enough, on the one hand, and secondly, irrespective of the size of the pot, how is it distributed? And this paper emphasises particularly the second point, and that's what Martin concentrated on primarily, which was about making sure that there is a formula that can stand the test of time, that gives a fair amount of money, and fair is always a word that people argue about long into the night, a fair amount of money between typically industrial heartlands and big cities on the one hand, and rural Shire counties on the other, whether they're district or unitary. And that formula is going to be haggled over, and it's not going to be fair in what you might call mathematical or academic terms, it's going to be fair in whether or not the two sides, the ones that are going to have to lose and those that are going to gain, can come to a deal. So this isn't going to be, I don't think, a mathematical argument about taking a precise formula and everybody accepting it, because that doesn't, that isn't the way that politics works, not when there's losers, big losers and substantial gainers. And I can't see it happening very quickly, because if it did happen, there's bound to be dampening that would reduce the amount of the loss of poor Surrey in order to fund, you know, Lincolnshire. So, you know, this has got some time before it comes to fruition. But, that said, I think that the time is right, given the importance of the fact that it doesn't have to be legislated through, because in one sense, there's a commitment in the Queen's Speech. But the other part of the deal, which wasn't, sorry, the other part of the argument that wasn't mentioned very much, was this question about, is the pot big enough in itself? And that's where I want to raise a few points that I hope are taken on board when we do go out to lobbying. The first one is that we deal with the question in paragraph three, which talks about, this should be left to the LGA, the network of county council, the county network, and the Society of County Treasurers, they're best placed to lead on that. If we then just turn the page to paragraph 11, it says that the county council should engage with those organisations, but in addition, more locally based activity for fair funding should go on with government ministers, local MPs and other public sector bodies. I think as much emphasis ought to go on to lobbying for the local government pot to be bigger, as is the case for the redistribution of the pot. Because it's only at a time, and we think about families, really, you know, the link, it's at times when times are hard that there's a battle going on in the family for who should get the food, right, the distribution of that food. When there's plenty about, the arguments are less. And I think that we have come to a point in time when it's not just about the argument about the distribution, it's about the size of the pot. Because austerity is now sounding like something clearly of the distant past, and it was that sort of discussion that was implicit, I think, in the outcome of the general election.
Councillor Parker, you've exceeded your time. Can you please wrap up? Thank you.
Certainly. But my concluding point is, I'd like to see the lobbying of government ministers, local MPs and other public sector bodies take place as much on the question of the size of the pot as on the distribution of it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker, and apologies for that inappropriate phrase. My next speaker is councillor Marian Overton. Councillor Marian Overton, thank you.
Thank you very much, chairman. I also am pleased to support this motion. It is vital at this time, because it is something that could be done without primary legislation, much of which could be difficult. So it is the right time to be doing this, and I'm grateful that it's been brought forward. Yes, we're £30 million short by 2020, and that's ongoing, that's year on year. So getting out the reserves, which we've been doing, selling off assets, which we've been doing, is a solution, but it doesn't resolve the underlying issue that this council has got to be properly funded. The point about the Local Government Association, and I would like to support the point made just recently by councillor Parker, I think if we are saying that our councillors here still elected a Conservative council regardless of the cuts that were placed on our residents, then could it be argued that politically, we don't make any difference, whether we get money or not, politically? So I do think that because this is a complicated process, we do need a body like the Local Government Association to take a lead in making sure that the overall pot is big enough. Currently, it's £5.8 billion short by 2020, the pot is not big enough. They did promise us the remaining 50% of the business rates to come back, but that has now fallen away, as we heard. So, on the Local Government Association, I would like to pledge support, and as many of you know, I am recently re-elected vice-chairman of the Local Government Association, and very pleased to offer every support that I can, and not just to Lincolnshire, of course, but to make sure that we get a fair funding across the country, because clearly, it is not at the moment. Not only are we short, we now find we are competing with DUP, and yes, Ireland has got more, and you could argue they deserve more, but also they had more before as well per head. So the question of fairness, is it related to need? Is it related, as Surrey would argue, as to how much you produce and contribute to the economy, or indeed, how much you would make out of the money if you were given a bit more? But when all said and done, it is clear that there has to be a baseline where Lincolnshire has to be able to provide the fundamental services and facilities that all of the residents of Lincolnshire need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Overton. Our next speaker is councillor Robin Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw.
Thank you, chairman. When I read this, I thought, is this the Mrs Millions' part two? Never mind. In the summary, it states that LCC has experienced consistently low government support over a long period. This is glossing over the cracks, in my view, and it should state since 2010. This is evidenced by savage cuts in funding, for example, the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, which was going to be due, which will now leave Lincolnshire, and that's us all, with yet another traffic problem, even before it's complete, and that's according to the voters in my division. We do, however, support the fair and equitable basis for all councils, including the second-tier authorities like Lincoln, who have been consistently short-changed. The government post and pre-election plans are now hollow, because as any proposals for equity are not in the legislative programme. Future funding outlooks should be supported cross-party, as electorate are waking up to the fact that local authority, local government services are at crisis point, and enough is enough. They're no longer, particularly in Lincoln, swayed by scurrilous vindictive tabloids that are well past the sell-by date, that publish vitriolic reports on public services without any accountability, albeit the Press Commission has taken limited actions in some cases. Many of these unfounding comments, in my view, are vindictive towards our excellent staff, who worked to the best of their abilities in an ever-changing, deliberate and cynical attempt to prioritise all public services wholesale. attempt to privatise all public services wholesale.
Thank you councillor Renshaw. Our next speaker, councillor Mrs Alison Austin.
Thank you, chairman. I think it goes without saying that I shall be supporting this. There's just one aspect that does concern me, and it is something which, although it would involve national policy rather than just our lobbying, concerns our local retention of business rates when for a large portion of our business, certainly in our area of Lincolnshire, businesses are zero rated. So when you come to pooling, pooling zero isn't very useful. Now, we don't want to be penalising vital businesses which are part of the, so important to the national economy, but we need some compensation for the fact that we get zero. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs Austin. And would councillor Hill like to come back to sum up on any comments? Councillor Hill?
Yes, thank you, chairman. What I didn't mention before, what is also very vital, that we get this formula correct, because obviously although localisation of business rates seems to be on hold for the moment, because there's no mechanism for the government to do it, I'm sure that still the government is committed to doing that. If the same formula is used to distribute the money that we currently do, we are in big trouble, because the business rates we generate are less than the money we get under the current system. So you're right. The pooling system at the moment is, you're correct, but the government does, I believe, currently compensate district councils for the amount. But again, that's another key issue when business rates are localised, how is that going to be resolved? Because if the cost then falls on rural areas, because we have by our nature a lot of small businesses in villages and all the rest of it, that would be a key, was one of the key issues which they are working with. I mean, I understand where councillor Park is coming from, the pot big enough. And one of the issues is that makes me annoyed, the government says we've all got to save money and they take the same amount of cuts off London and London Boroughs they do off Lincolnshire County Council. Surely if they're giving more, in my view, it should have been on a sort of graduated scale. But I do take the argument that local government, we do argue, and I have to be fair to the government, I would also remind members that, first of all, in terms of the biggest problem, the biggest financial pressure we've got, adult social care, they have made more money available through various mechanisms, quite a substantial amount of money, which NHS colleagues are always trying to claw back for themselves. So they have recognised the problems. And we talk about the general election, the previous Conservative government or Conservative Party did come up with a plan to actually try and fund it, and I think it did backfire in our place. But I suppose what you could say, at least that was an honest attempt to actually say how we are going to fund elderly population in the future. And I think the other parties tended to run away from that and just talk about vague ideas as to where the money would come from. So the other thing is that it isn't very difficult either, because Leicestershire have done a very useful piece of work in terms of, and they did it themselves, so if they can do it in about two, three months, I really struggle to understand why others can't do it. And they came up with a formula which very simply meant that some of the London councils would lose a bit of money, not a lot of money, and everybody else would almost gain. That is so how unfair the system is. And that would, so there is actually, if people have got the will to do anything about this, the rest of the country could just say, well, you lose a little bit, some of your massive advantage, London, and all the rest of us, including the metropolitan areas and the rest of the country could gain. So there's a formula out there which I don't think anybody's seriously challenged. So this isn't difficult. I think it's all about the political will to actually say, we've got to get to a fair system and all of us in local governments across the country agree what is fair and then we'll slowly get there. So I welcome all the support I've had, we've had across the chamber, and we will be promoting quite a lively campaign and we'll be frankly expecting others in the county to support us in this. So at least we have tried and hopefully if we try hard enough, we'll get to a better place. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Hill. There are no further speakers, so we have to take a vote on this. It has been moved and seconded. Please show all those in favour. All those against? And any abstentions? I think that is clearly passed. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item number nine, Bourn Town Hall Trust Management Committee, change of membership. We've all had a report by the director responsible for Democratic Services. And in the absence of councillor Brailsford, I ask for councillor Mistress Bradwell to take.
Well, this is quite straightforward. The two councillors who are no longer with us, I don't mean like, they're no longer county councillors, they are with us, body and mind, but no longer sit on this council. We're asking to replace them with councillors Dobson and councillor Woolley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Bradwell. We have a speaker, councillor Marian Overton. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry first, we need to second that first. Sorry councillor Miss. Thank you councillor Mrs Woolley. Councillor Mrs Overton.
Very much. I'd like to pay tribute to all those involved in making such a success of this project. And as you know, councillor Helen Powell, who's not here today, was one of those. And at the time when she was on the county council, it was deemed legally incorrect for a member of the council to also be a trustee, who is a local member, sorry, with a local person, it was deemed that she couldn't be on that board because of a conflict of interests. But I see that appears to have gone now. So I'm happy, if legally is now changed and correct, then I'm happy to support it. I'm just questioning because I know it wasn't allowed previously. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Woolley, we have a point of order.
Councillor Overton, would you just expand on why you think it's incorrect? Because I don't believe it is.
That is the question. Because when councillor Helen Powell was on this committee and as a local member wanted to be on that board.
I too am a local member.
She wasn't able to because it was deemed a conflict of interest.
I wasn't either.
Right, okay. So it is legally correct. In that case, I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs Overton. I have councillor Bodad Adams to speak.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just on the point that councillor Overton has raised, the criteria was that members who represented Bourn could not be on this, could not be appointed as a trustee, which is why they couldn't be. But what I really stood up to say, Mr Chairman, was to place on record, and I'm sure councillor Brailsford would have done this had he been here, to place on record the sterling work that councillors Ellis and Tweedell did during their time on this committee or on this management committee. It's been a difficult journey, Mr Chairman, it's not been easy, that both of those contributed very greatly to the success or where we've got to. And I think it should be placed on record, this council's thanks for the work that they did.
Thank you councillor Adams. Right, there are no further speakers, so we need again to vote. All those in favour, please show. Any against? And any abstentions? That is clearly passed. Thank you very much. Swiftly on to item number ten, executive support councillors on scrutiny committees. Again, a report from Democratic Services has been circulated, and I call on councillor Mrs Jackie Brockwell.
Thank you, chairman. The purpose of this paper is really to make sure that there's no conflict of interest in the role of the executive support councillors. For the benefit of the new members, they support the executive, but they are not executive councillors themselves, so there's a kind of halfway house. But it's very important that their role is transparent without us losing their expertise. At the moment, they're restricted and can't be voting members of committees linked to their portfolio holder. This paper asks us to decide whether we want to continue that position or not, and I'd like to move please and hope that we do have full cross-party support for this, that the council agree to maintain the existing restrictions on the scrutiny committees to which the council's executive support councillors can be appointed. This will ensure transparency and hopefully give members of the public full confidence in the role. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Mrs Brockway. And do we have a second?
Yes, as we see on the order paper, I think. Yeah, seconding it, as Jackie Brockway said, it's important that there is a distinction between those that execute decisions and those that scrutinise them. I think it's also important that it's transparent, as councillor Brockway said, and from a point of view of public perception, it wouldn't be a good thing to see an executive support councillor being involved on one side of a line and then sort of rushing around the table and then scrutinise it on the other. What we're doing is maintaining the existing position which has worked successfully so far.
Thank you councillor Parker. I have no speakers registered, so again, we have to take the vote on this. All in favour, as printed? Thank you very much. Any against? And any abstentions? Right, we're doing well this morning with three unanimous decisions. Thank you very much indeed. Moving swiftly on to item number eleven, a review of financial performance. And again, another report has been directed from the Director of Finance and Public Protection, and I call on councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Hill.
Thank you. This is an annual report which comes to the council, because obviously when we get the financial outturn at the end of the year, then we have to decide how to deal with, if there was an underspend, how we'd cover that. But if there's an underspend, what we'd do with that. And proposals before you, there is of the underspend we've had for the previous financial year, on those matters which relate to the county council, because part of that underspend was actually schools and other items which we have no control over. But of the remaining underspend, our proposals are there before you. For new members, the policy of the council is that there is automatically, unless we change it, one percent is automatically retained by a department or a part of the council which has had an underspend. I think that's a very good policy. Unfortunately, government and the NHS don't have such a policy, so we're not in this business where in the past, you know, there was a temptation to get your budget spent up so you didn't lose it back to the centre. We don't do that. So as part of the papers, you will see, I believe, where the proposed one percent will be spent, plus some small additions. Of the remaining underspend, I think which is dealt with on page twenty-eight of the report, in addition to the one percents and the other sort of routine issues like sickness funds and various funds we hold for good financial prudence, if you like, we are proposing to create some new reserves. So we're not keeping all the money in the bank, so to speak. So we're going to have a million pounds set aside for what we're calling the contract development reserve, because we have some big contracts coming up for renewal, particularly the KIA contract, although it's some years away. So we do need to have to a fair bit of work to make sure that we've done the preparatory work, so when we commission those new contracts, we have done the necessary work. So a million pounds has been set aside for that. And then there's five millions in addition to that which is called for environmental sustainability. So that is basically issues such as environmental issues, flooding issues, and indeed highways issues related to highways. So we believe that it's right to add a bit more money into that pot, because again, we know we have issues there, we know on all sorts of those areas, so we think it's the right thing to do to put initial five million, put five million pounds in there. And then we have advanced design reserve, and as we previously discussed, it is important if you are bidding for new projects that you actually have plans in place, all the design work is done. This takes some time, so two million pounds. So if we've talked earlier about, for example, the coastal highway and HICOM improvements, well, we need somebody, we need the money there to actually do that design work, because otherwise we're just posturing if we haven't got everything in place. And then there was a substantial underspend on the winter maintenance budget this year because of the mild winter, so I think it's only right that nearly half a million goes into a construction of this permanent salt storage at Horn Castle. We've nearly got across the county all of them done now. They do actually are more efficient and in the end will save money. But more importantly, Environment Agency are very keen that all the salt stores across the country are put in these buns. And so we will be forced to do it in the end. And at the moment, the Environment Agency accepts that we are making good progress, and I think we are nearly there with that programme. And there are one or two smaller details there where we are. So I think this actually creates, gives the right balance between actually looking at making sure that we, some of the underspends are spent, but actually, we actually have a policy at the moment which I think is the right policy, and we always seem to have this debate twice a year, once at the budget meeting and once when we discuss the use of underspends, that whether you spend all the more money now because it's there, or whether you put it away ready for a, I'd say a rainy day, ready for future problems. And I think the key point I would like to make in terms of this decision and why we think it's right to top up the volatility reserve, is that the direction of traveller funding is inevitably down. And there is a paragraph on page nineteen of the Fair Funding Report, that tells it in great detail, that our external funding from between 2016 and 2019 will go down from a hundred and sixty million pounds to a hundred and fourteen, one one four. So that we know what the funding is substantially reducing, and we know by the end of, by 2020, instead of getting two hundred million from external sources, government sources, we'll be down to twenty million. So we know what's happening there. We also know that although funding is going down, demand is going up. So it is only right that I, we think that we have a volatility reserve. So the overall plan, the financial plan, if you like, for this council is that we have enough money set aside, so every year, and for the past several years, we've been able to draw down approximately twenty million pounds from our reserves, if you like, to actually smooth the progress down and actually make sure we don't have to make some drastic decisions. And that is why we've been able so far to, the savings we found have been, I think, prudent and moderate. If we didn't have, weren't able to call on this financial volatility reserve, I'm afraid that we would be looking at some very difficult decisions. And the other thing you need to always remember about reserves is that you can only spend them once. So it's really no good spending money which is in reserves, a one-off sum of money, and then what do you do next year? Because inevitably you'll have to top it up from somewhere. So I think I would strongly advise this council, the right course of action is to mostly put these reserves into for future problems, but at the same time rightly use some of that money now on projects which we'll be used to as for this current year.
Thank you councillor Hill. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that, chairman. I think, well, this is in line with the council's financial regulations, and it also supports our much-needed future highways ambitions, which will enable future economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Miss Corey. And we have a speaker, councillor Robert Parker. Councillor Parker.
I hope everybody's got a copy of the Labour Group amendment which should have been circulated. Is that the case? Yes? Somebody confirm that's the case? Yeah, fine, okay. Can I begin by apologising for it being delivered late? We normally try to get it done in order for it to go into the order proceedings, but that wasn't possible on this occasion. The second thing I want to say by part of the introduction is that the overview and scrutiny management board considered this paper, and I reported to the executive the views of the people that attended, the members that attended the board, and they were positive. I say that because I have a role as chair of the overview and scrutiny management board, but I also am leader of the Labour Group. So what I'm saying now is about separating out what I feel is the way that I represented the views of the board, and quite separately, these are my political views. It's a balancing act, but I just want people to be clear about that. The first thing that I want to sort of support councillor Hill on is about the rhythms of the council year. In February, we set our budget, and councillor Hill presents a budget. In February, we set our budget, and councillor Hill presents a budget typically, and the Labour Group move an amendment, and this amendment here about the expenditure is a reflection of the same thing that we argued back in February about our political priorities. So it seems quite reasonable to argue that if there is an underspend, then that underspend should go on our political priorities. Now, you might not agree, but that's, that's the basis of the argument. The point, the point being that this budget that we, sorry, the use of this underspend, creating what you might call a mini-budget, is a development from the past, because the, for the, I'm not saying the first time, but the significant expenditure being used in these Conservative proposals, which is different, because in the past, a lot of it has gone into volatility, and the amount of money that's available for such things as environmental improvement and sustainability reserve, five million pounds, highway advanced design, two million pounds, contract development, a million pounds, is a significant development, and we give support to that. We want to see it go further, because part of our argument is that money that's available should meet priorities now, today's priorities. It is important to have a volatility reserve, and we've never disagreed with that. What we are saying is it's a question of balance between the amount that goes from underspendings into the volatility reserve and that which is made available for current year spending. The points that are identified in our amendment are, we think, the political priorities, and they're the sort of things that you will have heard on the doorstep during the campaign that you obviously ran in April and May for the county elections and in May and June for the general election. So we go back to street lighting, and I know Richard Davies must be fed up by now in battling on these, batting off these questions, but the point comes back to it that it is a matter of serious concern for local people. And when I say local people, I mean local people, not just in, in Lincoln, but in all parts of the county, regularly still features on Lincolnite and on social media. And the same way outside of Lincoln, maybe just about in Lincoln, but grass cutting is something, again, that local town councils and parish councils do not want to take up, and we feel as though for the relatively small amount of money, that should be a priority. But the two, what I would consider to be on people's minds, adult social care, which councillor Badwell referred to in terms of government funding, and delayed transfers of care. She acknowledged, and I mean this, just by repetition, not to impute anything about that we're doing okay now, but in winter, things get worse, and therefore, we're making the point that money should be available in each of the seven districts to remove any problems with delayed transfer of care during the rest of the, the year. And that particularly would kick in now and go through till, to March. And anybody who comes to county offices regularly as a council member from outside of Lincoln often has some, something to say about traffic. One of the things that we have been arguing about, not just Labour Lincoln councillors, but Labour councils across the county, and other people have picked it up, is this question of park and ride, the ability to keep traffic out of Lincoln by being able to park at a relatively low amount of money on the periphery and get into Lincoln quickly and efficiently. And we've been banging on about this for a long time, and we reaffirm that position. We want to see a commitment made to park and ride in Lincoln. One of the sites that's been suggested is a junction of the A57 and the bypass, and we think preliminary work ought to start on that in the current financial year, and money is being made available. These proposals are amounts of four million pounds, and that money would be taken out of the financial volatility, reduce the financial volatility reserve from 20 million, being put in out of the underspends, to 16 million. Each of these, we think, are the political priorities of a lot of people, and I can understand that maybe they are not part of the current administration's priorities, but it's about recognising that other people have got views which are not always listened to, and it's, we feel it's our responsibility to speak for, speak up for those people that have been pressing us as councillors to see something done about that. This is why the Labour Group and myself are moving an amendment to the paper that's before us, and I think we will be looking for a second from our group.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Do we have a second, councillor Renshaw? Thank you very much.
I'll make it short. The problem with the financial, with the financial volatility reserve being too high is that government sees Lincolnshire as managing and coping, and that we can maintain Lincolnshire low-rate support contribution in the future, and in other words, short changes. And we've overwhelmingly agreed to press, to get a better settlement, so that goes without saying we should take every step. We should at least spend the small amount that we've outlined in our amendment on, to show that we are taking steps within our resources to help things. And the park and ride is not just about solving Lincoln's traffic problems, the big thing we seem to forget about year on year is the quality of air in Lincoln. Our air pollution levels on Broadgate, to name one street, is far well below the levels that are acceptable, and, and that's a step we should be taking, because it's not just about air pollution, air quality for the sake of it, but it's about the health of all the people in the immediate vicinity. So I support the amendment, second amendment, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw. I have three speakers. I shall now take councillor Mrs Patricia Bradwell.
Okay then, Mr Chairman, thank you. Just want to come back on this alternative way of spending reserves and just pick up on, going back to adult social care. I would just like to advise colleagues that within the BCF, we've got an additional 15 million pounds, which is going to be used for enhancing delayed discharges. We're just actually going to put a paper together, it will be going to Health and Wellbeing Board, but also adult scrutiny will be advised of this, but it will also be putting more money into home care, and we're looking at doing something with residential homes as well. Obviously, we've got to be careful with those two contracts, because actually, they, we are, we'll be re-procuring them, and we can't be giving ongoing money if we don't know where the BCF next year is going to be here, but we're going to pump-prime all the areas. There's going to be also some pump-priming communities as well. So a lot of work within this 15 million is there for the delayed discharge. I'd also just like to say with regards DFGs, we've got five million pounds this year going into the seven districts for DFGs, and actually, we're getting the districts working together, and there's going to be a housing subgroup sitting under the Health and Wellbeing Board that is made up of the seven districts plus member of Health and Wellbeing Board, who are going to really major on, you know, what are the DFGs being spent on. There's got to be a focus on actually getting people, as we've said, back from hospital, and actually, we know before, some adaptations have taken a while. So there's a real focus this year in that area as well, to help in getting people back home and with the adaptations. So quite a lot of work there being prepared is going to come before council, but we only recently got the guidance from the government a couple of weeks ago, so we've really been waiting, but members will get to know all about that very shortly. But, you know, a great amount of money in addition to what we've been spending, and we have to spend it in the next couple of years. So as I say, I think we'll be pleased with what we're going to do, but we're just at the stages of taking it through the council.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bradwell. Our next speaker is councillor Marianne Overton.
Thank you, Chairman. I am pleased to see that there is some thought being put into what needs improving and where this money should go, and it is nice and clearly laid out. The, I'm glad in particular that there is money there for the environmental and highway schemes, bearing in mind the state of our roads, and I know this is an old chestnut, but we do have the 9,000 kilometres of road, and driving in Cornwall recently, I noticed that theirs, their roads didn't have nearly so many repairs. They don't get that cold weather, and it's amazing what a difference it makes. So particularly in my area, I'm noticing that this is a dangerous situation that needs a lot of work. There are things that are not in here that might be future time bombs, and I think that's just, I'm just putting it on the table for some thought, and it's been mentioned already, and I was pleased to hear councillor Hill say that there'd been a good deal of work and thought already following the issues raised from the dreadful Grenfell disaster. And there may be many things that we need to do under the building regulations as they change and are reviewed, so that I think is another thing that we'll need to make sure is at the top of our agenda. The other point I would just like to raise again is about having local cost-effective facilities wherever possible, such as local recycling sites, and I know the move is towards big shiny ones that are all singing, all dancing, but they are extremely difficult for people to use when they are a long distance away. So just a few points. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Overton. Our next speaker is councillor Eddie Strangle. Councillor Strangle.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, first of all, I agree with councillor Mrs Bradwell on all her points, but it's interesting to pick up on councillor Parker and councillor Renshaw's amendment, as it's called. First of all, on your street lighting, your estimations are way below what it would actually cost to actually reinstate that, and I have that on good authority. Similarly, Mr Chairman, councillor Parker's amendment on grass cutting is similarly underfunded. It's a lot more, it's going to take a lot more than that to actually reinstate that. And it's interesting, Mr Chairman, that councillor Renshaw in his previous debate about 2010 is wondering how on earth we have to do all these things. Well, it's simple, Mr Chairman. Had there been any money left in 2010, we would not be in this situation, and I think this council is acting very responsibly in actually making sure that we deliver the services to the people of Lincolnshire in a proper way. Obviously, we would love more money, but we're working on it. As the leader rightly says, the fair funding formula should be approved, hopefully, and then we will move on from there. But I dispute the figures in this amendment. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Strangle. We have, our final speaker is councillor Kev Clark. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll be swift as that's your inworder today. I'm in favour of the amendment, and if we look at just two issues, the grass cutting and the lighting. We told residents the lights would go off because we're going to save money. We told them we're not going to cut the grass because it will save money. But imagine being a resident in a pub and you're told, oh, yeah, 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 you have to have all these cuts, oh, there's a load and load of underspend that the council's done. The two of them don't go together, it almost seems like the residents are being conned here, being told, cut services, save money, but then we got underspend. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Oh, we have one more speaker, councillor Angela Newton.
Thank you, Chairman. I have difficulty, although also share some of the concerns of councillor Parker's amendment. I was totally opposed to putting all the streetlights, but since then, have had meetings with councillor Davies and had his assurance that he will deal with exception sites, and I'm pleased that he's mentioned that today, and I feel if that's done all across the county, then that is a move forward. I think that there are some lights that we don't need back on, so I don't feel that reinstating all the streetlights is absolutely necessary. I hear what councillor Bradwell says about social care and feel at this time that this money can stay in the volatility fund. I'm pretty ashamed of the state of our grass verges, and I know my part of the district council in Spalding, we are putting our own personal budgets into tidying the town up, and it is a disgrace, and I'm really sorry that we ever did that, but because this is an omnibus amendment, I don't feel able to support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Newton. We have another councillor, councillor Paul Key. Councillor Key.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Now, I fully support the amendment here from the Labour Party, Mr Parker and Renshaw. As I say, I've been against the cutting off of streetlights because it's the biggest issue in the area that I represent, closely followed now by the grass verges, car parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It just goes on and on. How long, or how many more cuts do we have to make before the council is happy? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Key. Right, that was our final speaker, and now we have to vote on the amendment as put forward. Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry.
I wouldn't mind replying to some of those comments. Well, there's been a lot of talk about we're ignoring the political views of the great Lincolnshire public. I think some members have forgotten, we've just had a county council election, and I have to say, we were quite clear, you know, we, you know, some of us, I think, there were some who argued that the putting, being honest with the electorate about the streetlights and the grass cutting was, some would call a brave decision, but I'm sorry, there's, we had the election, there's now 58 people sitting behind me, and there's 12 people sitting behind everybody else, so the voters have spoken, and I think my view is they understand the situation we're in, and they, I think the election result in Lincolnshire just show they understand the position we are in, and they accept, and they're having had the explanations of why we're doing what we're doing and the choices we have to make, because we would say, well, if you're going to put on streetlights back on and all this stuff, well, what else is going to be cut? And I think they understood that, and they gave an emphatic answer back to us that, yes, we are prepared to go, because obviously, political opponents try to use the, certainly the streetlights as a, as a key political weapon, if you like, and I'm afraid that weapon failed to have any impact whatsoever. So I do hope members opposite won't carry on...
It's a point of information, information. I'm not saying that you're deliberately misleading the council at all, but in some of the Conservative election manifestos that went out, at least for two of the members in this council, members of your group, each of them committed themselves to campaigning against street lighting. Okay, they wanted to see street lighting back on, councillor Strangle and councillor Fido. Now, you may have clearly had a manifesto, but it wasn't always delivered exactly the way that you wanted it to in the individual election addresses.
From to one side, that still leaves us with 56 out of 70 councillors, so I think there is a clear, and countywide, there was a clear view that would happen, and I think councillor Strangle has clearly stated that some of these figures are actually wildly optimistic. But I think the broader term I would like to say, it is the old argument about there's some money there, do we spend it now? One-off money, do we spend it now, or do we put some of it to one side, or how much of it do we put to one side for the, for the future, down to the reductions, the savings we've got to find in future? And our view is that we've had an underspend, and my rough calculation here is we're probably 12, 13 million pounds, if you add it all up together, including the 1%, it's probably 13 or so million pounds we're proposing actually goes back into services. I think that figure's approximately right, whereas the opposition are saying we should have, or the Labour Group are saying, no, that's not enough, we want to put, take that up to 17 or 18 million pounds. I think the key thing is, and I do strongly urge the council to support this motion, because I think our proposal has the right balance so that in future years, we can confidently predict for certainly two to three years, that we know where we are and we can have a smoother descent in terms of, of savings, and we don't want to get into position, because these are, is one-off money, where we're having to make deeper cuts two years' time or even earlier, because the money is all gone. So I think this is the right way forward and the right balance between protecting the front line, improving the front line at the same time as future-proofing what we do in the future. So I do hope that members will support this, this proposal, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Hill. Right, we'll get it right this time. We have an amendment put forward by the Labour Party, and we We have an amendment put forward by the Labour Party, and we need to vote on this amendment. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? And any abstentions? Thank you. Right, I don't think we need a recount, so we now have to vote on the original motion as proposed by councillor Hill and seconded. All those in favour? All those against? And any abstentions? That is clearly carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Onto item number 12, motions are next on the agenda. Members are reminded of the rules of debate. These are set out in the order of proceedings before you. And we have a motion by councillor Robert Parker. Oh. Yes.
Well, come to the Health Scrutiny Committee. I think as vice-chairman of Health Scrutiny, whilst I note the amendment, in order to protect my position, I should declare an interest and leave the chamber so I'm not prejudiced when it comes to health scrutiny.
Thank you for that councillor Bruis. Okay, does anyone feel the same as councillor Bruis at this moment?
Yeah, Chairman, I, I mean, I, leaders, like yesterday, group leaders, I mean, we are, we will be moving an amendment. I'm not sure what the, what the mover of the motion is view of that, but if this amendment is successful, it will actually negate the need for members of the Health Scrutiny to declare an interest and leave. But, and that has been circulated, but obviously I'm a bit ahead of councillor Parker at the moment, just for information purposes. I think that has also been circulated, but it is a matter for the individual members of the Health Scrutiny Committee.
Is that okay councillor Bruis? Thank you. Right, we have, I think councillor Parker to put forward your motion.
The amendment, I'll start with that unusually so. The amendment was discussed in the, in the group leaders' meeting, and the Labour group have a lot of sympathy for it, but we're not prepared at the moment to accept it because we won't want our day in the sun to argue our case based on the original proposal. I think, I think everybody realises that local government and the health service are strapped for cash, and Lincolnshire West Clinical Commissioning Group know more or less than anywhere else. But in a sense, it comes back to the fairer funding formula, the paper that we discussed, and the question about distribution of resources, or is the pot big enough? Because the starting point for the consultation paper, Have You Say?, is about the argument put forward by Lincolnshire West Clinical Commissioning Group, that they've got to somehow find £16 million very soon and £130 million by 2021. So the starting point is should a Lincoln walking centre suffer as a result of the size of the pot allocated to the National Health Service across the country and then brought back into Lincoln as a result of government issues? So that's, that's a starting point. There's a secondary point, which is, okay, if there is going to be funding, should it be to close Lincoln, Lincoln walking centre? Now, if you go out to consultation, I would argue that you need to have a robust case other than we haven't got a lot of money, we've got to find savings from somewhere. And I identified three of the big arguments that were not made in any substantial detail. Alternative services, if you're going to close something that's used by, acknowledged by the Lincolnshire West Clinical Commissioning Group, 100 users a day, 35,000, round figure a year, 35,000 users have got to be accommodated in some way. Now, we've all been to accident and emergency or have heard stories. Now, one of the stories, and I say that as a personal experience of councillor Sarah Dodds, she has circulated and it's gone out to every councillor by email and should, should be in councillors' iPads or computers by now, about her experience with her daughter in Louth and Grimsby. Louth Hospital and Grimsby Hospital only two or three days ago, and it was about the pressure that accident and emergency units in Lincolnshire are working under. Now, if we take a view that one of the good, one of the things about good organisation is that you don't let go of one well-used valuable service until you've replaced it adequately with another set of services so that the transfer is seamless. If you don't make that case, if you don't make the case that we do have extra capacity in our doctors' on-the-day appointment service, if you don't make the case that there are now more doctors being recruited for accidents and emergency, and we are now being able to cope with it, if you don't make the case for a new 111 service, then it leaves the public sceptical about the closure of one service and the capacity for other services to pick up the demand. And that's the first point that's been made. First and second points, there's no financial case to support the closure to show that future delivery of services can actually save money. Now, if you take the simple argument, and it is a very simple argument, isn't it, that the walking centre is sent to cost a million pounds a year, and you've got 35,000 users, then it's not that much a bigger maths calculation to figure out that it's £30 a visit. Once you've established that, then you need to be able to compare it to the demand, if all that demand moves straight into existing NHS services, as to whether or not each visit would cost the same amount of, same amount of money. Would it cost the same for GP surgeries, attendance at accident and emergency, a 111 service, or pharmacists? And certainly, accident and emergency and GPs would, the cost would seriously be more than the £30 call at an accident, at the walking centre. Another point about this is that quite simply, it's argued that a lot of people, 50% of the people that go to accident and emergen, sorry, go to the walking centre, don't actually need to go there, but are reassured. Now, if it was going to be reassurance, maybe at £30 a cost, a trip, it's better for it to take place in a, in a walking centre than it is in a GP surgery or an accident and emergency unit. So for all of those reasons, we took the view that this is worth opposing, opposing based on the consultation document that was issued by Lincolnshire West CCG. So we have a motion before us, but we also have an amendment which recognises that the executive councillor for health is here and listening and will take account of this debate, side by side with the deliberations of the Health Scrutiny Committee Working Party, which will then report to a Health Scrutiny Committee. So what we've got is our proposition. I welcome the views of people to be said here, but also there's going to be work done by Health Scrutiny, a working party which will come to Health Scrutiny, and then finally, the executive councillor for health will sum up those feelings, which I hope will be clearly in opposition based on what you've heard so far. Okay, that's why I'm moving this motion.
Thank you councillor Parker. Do we have a second, I believe councillor Renshaw?
Thank you for that, Mr Chairman. Lincoln Walking Centre is a nurse-led service. No appointment is necessary for minor injuries or illnesses. In short, it's a fast access to health advice and treatment. On a NHS official website, the centre was gained four out of five stars. The main point, as Rob said, it eases the pressure on the A and E. Adding pressure to the already troubled A and E is not the answer. In practice, the centre fills a gap. There's nothing in place that gives the same service. Many examples can be given about the benefits of the walking centre, and it's not just the cost. Take the old age pensioner who rings a GP, asks for an appointment. Yes, you can have an appointment in two weeks, therefore goes to the walking centre. You know, I think Rob said it all about this, and I believe as Lincolnshire county councillors, we're here to represent the people, and this is what we should do with supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clark. Right, councillor Hill.
I'd like to move the amendment, and hopefully there's agreement, then we can have one debate, as we, is normal in these circumstances. That would mean that Health Scrutiny members could, if they wished to, take part in the debate. But at the same time, I appreciate councillor Parker's point that we are here to gather together on behalf of the Lincolnshire public, and it would be a bit surreal if we sort of didn't express views. So my proposal is to move the amendment, and then that would hopefully allow people, to anybody who wishes to debate, because I'm sure members, particularly in the Lincoln area, would like to make their views clear. So the amendment has been circulated, hopefully everyone's got it, and the amendment says the executive councillor for health be requested to take into account the proposition and subsequent debate of this council meeting and the deliberation of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire before determining the council's response to the public consultation on the future of the walking centre in Lincoln. Because the difficulty we have is that we rightly take a very high view of scrutiny in this council so that they can inform the decision-makers. Well, the system we have here is that Health Scrutiny Committee is that vehicle we use, and we, we have agreed in the past, and our constitution is that we actually put our views into Health Scrutiny, who then respond on behalf of us, and those other members of councils who are on Health Scrutiny as well. And I think this will, this amendment will enable both visions, both views to be satisfied, so I'd so move. I think Mrs Bradwell.
Yeah, thank you councillor Hill.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you councillor Mrs Bradwell. Right, I've a few speakers. I have councillor Robin Renshaw.
I've an interest.
Oh, I've got you down, so anyway, don't worry. Our next speaker, councillor Carl Macy, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I was going to actually speak on the original motion that's put forward, just to say that I found this motion was somewhat premature due to the fact that Health Scrutiny are already consulting and working on this issue firstly by holding a working group this Friday morning. This, of course, will be cross-party, as is the committee. This will be followed by a full debate that will take place in the Health Scrutiny Committee on the 19th. I also feel this motion takes directly away from the important reasons of having Health Scrutiny and all forms of scrutiny throughout the council, and we should be allowed to get on with the job the committee are in place for. I also need to point out, the consultation has now been moved with a closure of the 18th of July, not as written as the 6th. And as we are to consider it in Health Scrutiny, I will be abstaining from this vote on the original and the amendment.
Thank you councillor Macy. Just to correct you, you did say the 18th of July. I think you find it's 18th of August, yes, so let's say 18th of August, members. Sorry, our next speaker is councillor Marianne Overton. Mrs Overton.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for clarity, I hope in the response that comes later, somebody will explain about the consultation period and how the work from the Health Scrutiny is going to fit within that consultation period, bearing in mind that there's some confusion on the dates. I think this fits with the comment I was making earlier about making sure we have services that are local and cost-effective. If you don't allow people to access the service at the right time when they need it, it can lead to much greater costs, both in terms of money, but also in terms of their ongoing health. And that's why I think it is absolutely vital to set this up and to keep it going. When I was on the Primary Care Trust, we used to look at the health of the whole of Lincolnshire. So we had a billion pounds to make sure that all the services were provided as best as possible in the right place at the right time. And that's actually why we set that one up, because we could see there was a need, and specifically to reduce people accessing A and E. And that's the additional cost that comes very strongly here. If you don't make it easy for people to access it when they need it, it will allow them to get worse. The other point about this, I think, is where we have this organisation, the Lincolnshire West Clinical Commissioning Group, are acting independently. When we had the Primary Care Trust, it acted for the county, and now, I'm hoping, and I think I hear, that we have this county council with the executive councillor and the health and wellbeing group really taking control of this, of the health for Lincolnshire, to make sure that we, these various bodies do act as a whole for the good of the county and for our residents. So in conclusion, it's not just the cost of doing this we have to think about, it's the cost of not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mrs Overton. Our next speaker is councillor Eddie Strangle.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Well, Walking Centre has proved to be very popular over the years, and it's in a densely populated area of Lincoln, opposite the Lincoln College. But it doesn't, doesn't just serve Lincoln itself, it serves a wider area as well of Lincolnshire. It is well-used, and I'd be very sorry to see it closed, to be honest. I think it is popular. I just hope that there will be a satisfactory outcome to this situation. However, I do agree that the best place is Health Scrutiny to actually determine the outcome, or at least to go forward on this issue. But I will be sorry to see it go, to be honest, as it does provide a very excellent service. And much as councillor Parker will fall over when I say I agree with him, I do think he is right in saying that, you know, it does take off a lot of pressures from the GPs and indeed A and E, and very, very much so in out-of-hours area times as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your comments councillor Strangle. Our next speaker, councillor Sue Woolley.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's fair to say that we've all got some misgivings about the future of the walking centre, and we've all got some concerns as well. As an example, in the consultation document, references made to the fact that there's a high percentage of students using the walking centre, yet the consultation is taking place in July and August, and actually the students aren't here. So that, you know, that, that just bothers me somewhat slightly. I appreciate and applaud an extension of the consultation, but I still don't think that it's perhaps covering all of the individuals that it could do. It was, I can't claim that, that, that highlight, it was pointed out to me, but I think it's a fair comment that is made. Having said that, this is a local consultation that is being held by a local organisation, the Lincolnshire Clinical Commissioning Group. It's about a local facility that's used by local people. And of course, sitting on that clinical commissioning group within the governing body are local clinicians themselves, i.e. GPs, and, and those who know far more about health and the provision of health than certainly I do. So I think that probably what I would suggest is that we perhaps make a decision regarding the response, once we're aware of all the facts. At the moment, we're, we're running blind, and once all those facts are available, then perhaps the council can give a very clear response back, and I shall therefore be supporting the amendment.
Thank you councillor Mrs Woolley. Our next speaker, councillor Julie Kelly.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm the councillor for the Parkward area, the district, and the walking centre is in my area. And as such, I've taken part in a range of public meetings. I attended the protest last Wednesday, and can I convey to the council the strength of local opinion about the proposed closure, because everybody's really, really concerned. In response, councillor Woolley, the higher education college being cited on Monks Road, Karen Lee yesterday received a petition of 1,500 students. Now, I know students aren't the sole recipients of the walking centre, but that just conveys one section of the people that use the walking centre, and obviously the students aren't just from Lincoln, they are from the county. So really, in terms of the strength of public opinion, I already have a sort of fairly good barometer that people are not happy in terms of the impact it will have on A and E. A and E, as we've already heard, is overstretched, and really, all we're doing is just passing the problem on and not really proposing a solution in terms of what's already here. The extended hours provision in doctor surgeries is not here. Three doctor surgeries in Lincoln have already been closed, so that just adds to... Three doctor surgeries in Lincoln have already been closed, so that just adds to the problem. So I'm just conveying really, you know, what I've been doing over the last three or four weeks. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Julie Keely. Councillor Patricia Bradwell is next on my list. Councillor Bradwell.
Near Lincoln, but I do feel very strongly about this. I just think it feels a bit like a knee-jerk reaction into how to save money, and actually, when you read the consultation, there is nothing in it that would give, well, like we've heard just now, people confidence that there's going to be a service there that people can access quickly when needed. I think actually, my personal opinion is that the CCGs haven't provided urgent care centres across the county as they perhaps should have done, and had you had an urgent care centre at the side of A and E at the hospital, I know this is down in the city, but, you know, lots of hospitals now around the country have this urgent care centre where you go in and then you're whipped into A and E if it's serious enough to warrant A and E. And I do believe that, you know, we've not got that far in Lincolnshire, and hence why there is such an outcry when a service such as this, which actually treats hundreds and thousands of people, probably on a weekly, monthly basis, is, you know, probably going to close. So, you know, I do feel for the people of Lincoln in the fact that, you know, we are in this position, and I think people in this council chamber would support you as well. No one wants to see a medical service disappear, we don't want to see doctor services closed either. So, you know, I'm not happy with this. Obviously, I'm not on Health Scrutiny, so I can make my views known, but obviously it's something that we need to take up with the CCGs as well. Sue meets with them and we meet with them as well, that, you know, we're very concerned about these proposals.
Yes councillor Mrs Overton.
Part of what's just been said, there did actually used to be a surgery-type walking surgery right next door to the A and E specifically for the reason for redirecting people called DART, and it was closed in favour of savings.
Thank you, Mrs Overton. I have two more speakers, I'm going to take councillor Mrs Angela Newton next. Councillor Newton.
Thank you, Chairman. I support councillor Parker in his motion. I feel that we can't afford to lose any of these centres, and I don't necessarily, I agree with scrutiny and that the scrutiny committee should look at it, but the timings are wrong here. If these have got to be in by the 18th of August, we as a council are not going to meet again. We are here representing the people of Lincolnshire, and I know our Health Scrutiny Committee is made up of eight county councillors, but also eight people who don't represent the county council. And I think today we need to send a message from the county council that we don't want to lose this facility. And there's no problem, in my opinion, of the Health Scrutiny Committee, when they meet next week, to pass on their recommendation as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Mrs Newton. And finally, we have councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Hill.
Just to talk about the substance of the issue, I'm very supportive of the comments that councillor Parker has made. I mean, I think he makes some very valid comments, and I have been, although I don't live near Lincoln, I have been a user of the walking centre sometime in the past, and I can tell you it was quite a queue, and I had to wait quite a long time. And if the walking centre wasn't there, that queue would immediately transfer up to Lincoln. And the last time I looked, I think Lincoln did have some, has lots of issues in terms of getting people dealt with up at the A and E. So I think there are some valid points there. I think the other issue probably I would make is, how does that fit into the STP vision that the health service have got? Because obviously, part of their proposals, I think we would be supportive of, is to have an urgent care centre, and where, I'm not sure where it would be, even if it was located, up at a hospital, but this seems to be doing totally independent of that. So one of the key questions is, well, what are your long-term plans, and are you just going to leave a gap in the services before? And I think it's fair to say that all councillors, I have not met anybody who's a county councillor who thinks this is a good idea on the face of it. I think we do need to be careful just to see and let Health Scrutiny tease out all the facts and hear what the health people have got to say for themselves in terms of how they think this will improve services or maintain services. But as it stands at the moment, I think it's fair to say that I haven't heard anybody saying they think this is a good idea, and to be convinced it was a good idea, I think we need some pretty dramatic information from the people concerned. So I would support the amendment, but I think unless somebody contradicts me, I think everybody is very sceptical about this. And of course, we all have an opportunity to put our input into the Health Scrutiny Committee, and I would encourage members from the Lincoln, and certainly greater Lincoln area and other areas, to give input either directly or before the Health Scrutiny Committee so that those issues can be teased. So that is it. But the general point is, I think there are some really valid issues raised in this motion.
Thank you councillor Hill. Right, we've had it put forward. Oh, sorry, councillor Parker, would you like to come back at all?
I'm sure it's easy to hear so much support in principle. A couple of points I wanted to make. The first one is to directly address councillor Macy's point, which is that this motion was premature. In a perfect world, you're right, but we wanted to separate out the valuable work that Health Scrutiny does from the position that this council as an independent body takes, which is separate to Health Scrutiny, and councillor Newton was right, you know, we represent between us the whole of Lincolnshire, and we've got our opportunity to speak. And I think that everybody that's spoken, moving round from councillor Newton through councillor Strangle, right round, has taken a view that this would be a service that at the moment, given the evidence we've got, would be much missed, and certainly the information that's been given to us is not sufficient to justify closure. Now, that's on the basis of this. The point about timing is that we wanted to make it clear where the council stood. There was just this issue about the Health Scrutiny Committee not meeting until afterwards. So, yes, scrutiny is important, but so too separately is the voice of the council, and that's the main point. But I think that it's, secondly, about us all recognising that we have a say in the things that go on about Lincolnshire. And in essence, I get the feeling that this was not a matter that was discussed with the Health Scrutiny Chair, sorry, the Health Scrutiny Committee Chair or the executive councillor, because from my understanding, it came out after Perdah had finished after the election on the 8th, and it came out as a statement on the term. So discussion amongst colleagues, you know, colleagues in the health world that's part of this council, wasn't really one of the strengths of the argument that they're putting forward, that we'd done some consultation beforehand. I think that this is a shallow document coming out, the Have Your Say. I think that the Health Scrutiny Committee will actually reveal stuff that even further supports the case for the retention of the Lincoln walking centre. I certainly hope so, but it's good to know that there's so much feeling of support for the retention of it here in this council chamber, and I'm happy to accept the conservative amendment.
Thank you councillor Parker. Right, there's no further speakers, so we've had the amendment which we have before us, and we need to vote on this amendment. So can we all have a show of hands in favour? All those against? And any abstentions? Thank you, that's clearly moved. Now, that now becomes a substantial motion, so we have to vote again. So again, can I ask all those in favour? All those against? And any abstentions? Thank you. That is clearly that. So that is, becomes the motion. And that concludes our meeting, members and ladies and gentlemen. I wish you a very nice lunch, and thank you for making my job easy today, I've been dropped in at the deep end, and a safe journey home. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, sorry madam, we can't allow this in the chamber. Thank you very much. It is a formal meeting, I'm sorry to say, but it is a formal meeting. Thank you very much for attending, and thank you. Thank you, thank you.